Time has officially rolled to 7:00 PM. Welcome to everyone. We will officially call the December 13, 2017 work session to order. Let the ministry reflect that all board members are present as well as a number of staff, and we have a number of guests that we're going to be hearing from here momentarily. So just a minute or two of some business, and we'll get right at it. We have the November 8, 2017 minutes before us, and would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved, seconded. Any discussion? See no discussion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We say thank you as always. Monthly reports for November are mostly all-in with the exception of finance, personnel, and public works, and I'm sure they, those last three will be in by week's end. So we'll thank all of those that have got it in in advance. Thank you, and the rest of the team will love, will get it in. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have several guests. We're going to start with our first guest, Heidi Shear, requesting a streamline approval for a clothing consignment shop at 2118 Five Mile Line Road. And Mr. Costello, I'd ask you to further tee that up, and welcome.
You did such a great job. There's not much left to say. Heidi, we're going to let you talk a little bit about what you'd like to do there. And then you've submitted a signed proposal, and I want you to just go right ahead.
I actually am a real estate agent, and I also have a separate LLC business, entire estates, where I do home estate sales. It's grown rapidly, and it's really to deal with some surplus as well as some consignment. There's great demand. I only am using, just to clarify, the 2118 Five Mile Line. I believe that's like the tuxedo shop, which is about 1,200 square foot. I'm only going to be utilizing the 273 square foot, which is really 2120 Five Mile Line Road. So just to clarify.
2120 is actually a number that was assigned by the owners, but our records all show it as being 2118.
Okay. Can, I have a question.
If it's been used as that for mailing purposes?
Well, that's my question. I want to put a mailbox there, and I don't want to, there's no one, there's not anyone leasing the other section.
Right, right.
So I want to be able to have some, you know, clarification on...
The post office would be aware of that.
Okay, so...
It's basically for the town's record as to what that property's address is, and it is one address for the entire site, but you can use that. We've done it in the past.
That was my question. So I don't anticipate it being really busy. It's going to be only open at this point, three days a week, and by appointment, but it'll, it'll be the hub for organizing the home sales, the estate sales, as well as some consignment.
So you're saying it'll just be on Five Mile Line because that's all it is? It's not facing...
It's facing Five Mile Line. It's right next to Divine Hair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, good.
It's the other part of, the last, the last business that was in there took the whole thing. They had two entrances, right?
Well, it didn't originally, but it kind of morphed into the other area.
In the end.
For storage and some other things.
But it's still divided enough.
Yes, it is.
So there's nothing different that one has to do to, to close it off from the other section?
It's a valid question, and there is a door that I've asked, and they've put on, there are actually two entrances. They're close in proximity, you know, from that 273 square foot. So up on a ledge, there's an opening. They're going to be drywalling that, I was told by the end of this week. And then there's going to be a door, there's already a door off a door section that goes down, opens the basement.
Is there any reason why you wanted that, that section versus the other section? I was just thinking, I need a being right next door.
Oh, yeah. I mean, many people want me to do that, but I, my primary source of income is my real estate, and I don't want, it could easily take off this. And people are like, use that other space, but I don't want to, because it'll already be busy enough and...
Understood.
Okay?
Three days a week, hours, hauled by appointment?
No. It'll be tentatively 10 to 4 Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. If that needs to be adjusted due to season, but I don't ever anticipate it being open more than four or five days a week. I don't think that would ever happen.
And you say surplus items and consignment items, so that tells me it's a combination of clothing and...
There will be almost no clothing.
Okay, no clothing.
And very small, oh, you'll love it.
Yeah.
But very minimal if it's, you know, there are some...
So what do you intend to sell?
Oh, you really should come to the grand opening.
We will, we will.
It'll be, it will be the first of the year.
Funny about the approval process, we tend to like to know that stuff before we approve, so...
Well, there's going to be desserts. There's a lot there, collectibles, and there'll be, I mean, it'll be a quality consignment.
Right, you can't have big pieces of furniture.
No, there will be smaller pieces of furniture, small appliances maybe, but again, more high-end. So it'll open the first of the year, which is a Monday, and that will be 10 to 4, grand opening. It's all been painted, and I'm going to be moving in the display units on Saturday.
Have you met with the fire marshal on the site?
No, I haven't met with him. I've been telling the people, can you get this ready so that they have what they need to do?
Well, the reason I brought that up is because you mentioned that you're going to do some drywalling.
I'm not going to be drywalling. They want to put that one entrance, one of the drywall, that won't be me. His name is Greg.
He should be meeting with our building inspectors before he does that.
I asked him to talk to you.
Would that be the Boychuk family, who owns it?
Well, they still own the property. I don't know who the contractor is, but that person should be meeting with the building inspectors before he does that.
Greg is the one who I bumped into, and he is the one who appears to be doing it. Mike, who used to live there, the son, grandson, is now moved out.
Are they in there on a day-to-day basis, or is he just coming over?
I never know.
Well, if you have contact with him, please let him contact us.
I have said that, so...
I don't want to walk in and see where it's done without proper permits.
Oh, there, yeah. Everything I've done is painting, and it's no longer nail polish blue, so it's like water, but...
All right.
But I have advised him.
Okay. Costello, just ask, maybe we mention that to Heidi and to Jeff tomorrow, and we'll make it a point to get down to that location.
Is there a different Heidi?
Our director of the building department, yes.
Oh, okay, suddenly.
We have a whole bunch of Heidi's.
Town Heidi.
Board questions, comments, concerns, issues?
Do you parking, your parking?
That's an issue. If you could put a parking spot right in front, or parking, it would be... I've talked to the other businesses, Divine Hair, they're lovely, and Tuxedo Park, I don't know if he's too thrilled because of the parking, but... I reached out for them.
It's behind the building?
It's behind the building. And people will be able to see. I think I've done everything pretty tastefully, if you've seen the sign that'll be going on, so...
Other questions, comments? So this, this request is for streamlined approval, so existing facility, different, different business in the area, but has been ongoing, businesses at that location of similar type of activities by way of hours and square footage and those types of things. So any concern about streamlined application?
No, I think it's appropriate.
Okay. And any other questions or concerns for the applicant? Any comments or additional questions for the board as it relates to what you're looking to do?
I just want to know, again, clarification on the mailbox, like where can I put one? I don't see them around there, so I just, in case I have people wanting to, you know...
You've got to be careful, because obviously we have to plow that area right by your building walls, so we don't want to be knocking the mailboxes off.
I don't want anything that's, I want something against the law.
Attached to the building.
I would suggest that you maybe want to talk to the postmaster.
Okay.
They have some recommendations for you to start handling that.
Yep. There will not be, I know that Jim had advised me, no flashing lights or anything like that. There won't be, you know, I'll have the hours posted, and there will be lettering, you know, that states when it's open and by appointment, but...
And no deliveries, it sounds like?
No, no. There will be people bringing items in, but if they can't carry it, it probably won't be coming. Saturday, there'll be display cases and such coming in, so... That's it.
Okay. Board comfortable with moving forward with this?
Yes.
Okay. We'll ask Mr. Costello to do his usual fine job capturing some of the items that we've talked about today. So they'll include things like making sure, get a permit for your sign, making sure that any remodeling is done with review and approval of the building department and fire marshal to make sure that that is taken care of.
Whose responsibility is that?
It is, well, that would be, I'll answer it this way, is that it's a combination of you and your landlord. So you should have an understanding of who's doing what, because it requires some type of review and permit, and if you're both standing there saying, I thought it was her, I thought it was him, that, that probably isn't going to bode well for when you want to open, because we have to make sure all those i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So I would encourage whoever you're speaking with, whether it's Mrs. Boychuk's daughter or grandson, just to make sure that you and them are on the same page.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, you know, any of the other usual items that we have for the Four Corners District.
Absolutely.
All right. Entertain a motion of approval?
Sure.
Okay. Will I lend a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded further discussion, comments, or items? All right. Seeing none, those in favor, aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Stay connected with Jim is what I would encourage, so that you can get those items taken care of.
So should I come tomorrow?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you. I'll see you at the grand opening.
All right. Very good. The next item on our next guest, Bill and Debbie Wickham, as well as their son, has joined us as well. This is for discussion of conservation easement at 1315 Suites Corners Road. And Mr. Valentine, I would ask that if you have any additional lead-in comments, that you give those to us, and we will...
Thanks. Yes. They say the Wickhams have been working with staff for several weeks, months now, as part of their look to move their operations over to Suites Corners Road. We've gone through different items, as the board is aware. There is a conservation easement to promote agriculture and retain agriculture on that property, but one thing I would just highlight very clearly, one for the public and for the board, is there's distinct separation in that property between what is now mixed use property to the south of that red line, highlight on here, and I'm sure Bill will go through that, but everything south of this line, or actually it's west, but on this map looks to the bottom of the page is mixed use on this side. Here north is RA2 and under the conservation easement. So I just kind of want to get that out ahead of the conversation as we get into it. There's distinct differences between one zoning and the conservation easement that's on the north side or the east side of that paint. So with that, I'll turn it over and let you guys do your thing.
Okay. Well, thanks for... So if you would, Bill, this isn't Kevin.
No, this is Dale.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that we've got our ministry reflected for our clerk that, I knew it wasn't Kevin, and I apologize. I probably would have known it was Dale, so I apologize.
Kevin's relatively newly married and visiting in-laws this week.
Congratulations and Merry Christmas.
Dale just came home from college.
Dale's home from college, so he's the fill-in tonight. So thanks for, thanks for inviting us in, and I'll just kind of go over, I think some of you've had some pre-read materials, and very open to questions if I'm not being clear along the way, not a, not a professional speaker for sure. So we've been talking to staff certainly over a number of months. We had, we essentially were approached by and received an unsolicited offer on real estate next to the YMCA, and sort of simultaneously, we've been running two, two venues, because, you know, our vegetable operation and our fruit operation is on Suites Corners, and it's, it's become more and more complicated to run two venues. So I'll just go through a quick, I gave you some handouts, and just give you a quick understanding of what we do for those of you that may not, you know, our tagline is farm fresh, family fun, and that's really what we're about. Right now, we service about over 300 families with a weekly vegetable share program. I think our seasonal employment, I should have looked today, but it's well over 100 for this year. Not all on, on the payroll at one time, but at the end of the year, we'll certainly send out more than 100 W-2s. About three-quarters of them are high school kids, which is a lot of fun, but it's a challenge. And I think we're, we're part of a lot of, a lot of local families' traditions, both in, you know, in fall family fun with pick-your-own pumpkins and all the other things that go with it, hayrides, corn mazes, jumping pillow. And now we're getting into, we're, our fall pick-your-own apples is really taking off. Our orchard is, this is the third year we've been, we've had, we've been harvesting, and they're on a, they go, the production goes up geometrically as the, as the orchard comes into, into full production. So been a lot of fun, and it's really, that, that is refocusing what we do on Suites Corners anyway. You know, we are a family operation. We target families. That's the business we're in, and not only that, Deb and I are getting to the age where we're looking at this and we either got to take our foot off the gas, or else we got to figure out how to make it viable for the next generation, and we've got...
Three kids.
Yeah. Three that have expressed interest, so trying to figure that out a lot, too. So where are we going from here, you know, in our evolution, and if, you know, I think most of you have been in Penfield for a long, long time, and you've kind of witnessed the evolution. I think Deb and I started growing pumpkins north of Grossman's in 1986, and then moved to the south, and now we're back, and we own the original real estate again, too. But looking to the future, you know, consolidation to sort of one location, although it's, there's some different zoning there, makes a lot of sense for us, and then, and prioritizing back to sort of our farm fresh, family fun. I think what we're proposing gives us a really good opportunity to sort of make a really logical and cohesive use of the two different types of properties. And so with that, I'll kind of run back through, and I think you all received the overview of what we're, what we're shooting for, and I'm going to grab one myself, so I have a list. And do you want me to go up and run through this on the...
That'd be great, if that works, Bill. And everybody does have copies of that?
I've got, I've got Matt copies, too. Yeah. That's what I made up.
Pass it to me.
Yep. There you go. You all have them?
Yes.
You all have this?
Decated December 11th?
Yes.
Yes.
Latest. I handed it out today.
So I'll just kind of buzz through, and a lot of this already exists. We just, again, we're kind of, we're looking to relocate and consolidate. So the 1303 property is, is under the mixed use zoning, and just going through sort of the list, and this is a conceptual layout. I'm not sure this is exactly how it works. What we're trying to do is we put the different, the different components on there, so everybody can kind of get a read for, for what it is we're trying to do. So jumping pillow, I can imagine, if anybody here that doesn't know what that's all about. Ag theme mini golf, and if you look on your, on the, you know, if you look on the presentation I gave you, that's, most of that is all, is all shown on here, so you know, jumping pillow, mini golf, and then if we keep on going down through that list. Now playground area, we have a little brick playground area near the greenhouse. Kitty train ride, this is again right out to the south of the jumping pillow and next to the greenhouse. Train ride, we actually looked at, there was somebody in Florida that had an operation like ours, and they were actually selling a ride on train, and sort of like what you have on Seabreeze, and we looked at that, it didn't, it didn't happen, and that's a good thing, because we weren't ready for it. But, but there's, there's potential for doing that, and that would kind of run the perimeter more or less, you know, again, that's, that's subject to, you know, subject to who knows. I have always wanted a zip line as part of this. Deb was scared to death of this. I put a, I put a picture in that presentation, it would be a very low level.
I'm the one in the black.
Yeah, yeah.
Dipping down.
Like the minister made a stop last morning with friends.
It's a kitty, he's a zip line. It's for kids and, and parents.
Yeah, so about the, that's about the highest you're ever off the ground. It's fun, I think it would be a good, it would be a good addition to what we're doing. Spider web is also depicted right next to that on that picture. That's just a fun thing, is kids are waiting for a hayride, or parents just want to take a, take a breath with the little ones, they just climb on it and go. Corn pit, also on the same page, it's like the ball pit you used to see at Chuck E. Cheese's. We actually fill it with shell corn, and kids love it. Who knew? Sports area, we don't anticipate batting cages making the transition with us. Instead, we're envisioning more like, oh, you throw a football through a target, and you know, basketball, through that sort of thing. It'd be a pretty small container, probably not a lot bigger than where we're, where we're standing right here. Kids slide, still working through that, but it would look like something like that. It would be one of those PVC terrain, kind of like a farm thing.
It might come off a tractor, you know, something.
Yeah. Still, still figuring things like that. I put batting cages on there. I, I think I could say with 99.9% surety, that probably won't be a part of this, this project if, when we make the move, but mini corn maze, we'd like to put a mini corn maze kind of out back on 1303 Suites Corners for a number of reasons. Some people just don't want to do a big maze. It also gives us an opportunity to buffer with the neighbors. We just wouldn't use the very back of that. Events building, so we have two buildings on Route 250 right now. We've moved one of them over, that pub is situated here, kind of behind the barn where we are right now. Use that for group events, birthdays, that, that sort of thing. Food service. Right now, we have all of our food service in the one building, and that kind of really makes it for a choke spot on busy days, and so what we, what we're envisioning is having several little, almost like sheds, where one might have donuts and one might have hot dogs, you know, so that we don't have to force everybody into that one spot and sort of clog up traffic. Also some, some restaurant facilities scattered around, same thing, you know, there are times that, there's times in the fall when, you know, we get clogged up because there's, you know, 10, 15 people waiting for each of the restaurants. Crop production's already going on, so certainly the corn maze. We do use the buildings right now for the farm. One of them is our vegetable washing barn in the summer. One of them is a farm shop. I wish I had a bigger one and a better one, but we get, we get by. It's a lot better than working out on a dirt hedgerow. And then there's also housing. We've got single fam, you know, a family living there, and then there's one or two, one bedroom apartment over the, over the shop. So that's what we see on, on 1303. Questions, anybody? Well, we're rolling. All right. And so then moving, that north on this, I guess, but it's really east.
Oh, rip, rip.
There you go. Moving up here, but certainly east if you're driving down Suites Corners Road, and some of this is, is already going on, on here, but I'll kind of, I'll kind of run through this again. So crop production area, I mean, look, we got 120 acres of, over there. The vast majority of this remains in, in crop production, and that's either for vegetables for our CSA farm share program, pumpkins, or apple orchard, and whatever the balance is...
Corn maze.
Whatever the balance is, is, is in grain production, so either, you know, field corn or soybeans right now, and you know, who knows? That, that can change over time, but that's, that's what it looks like. So apple orchard, I think you all, you're all pretty familiar with that. Apple shed, we kind of envision, and trying to figure out how to not have to do this, because it just adds another staff member, but what we've learned in, in running that over there is that sometimes, I don't know how they do this, but people kind of skip the entrance, and they, they walk their own way up into the, into the orchard, and so it gives us a chance to engage them, because we actually sell apples on the way into the orchard. We sell them by the pack bag, and so folks have to check in, they buy an empty bag. Debbie loves to sell, say, I just sold you an expensive empty bag, it's your job to go fill it up, and then it's, then it's a really good value. The large corn maze we have up, up top here, it's a little, it's, it won't be this, this big, it's just the way it got drawn, and it'd probably rotate between here and here and float a little bit, year to year. Now hayrides are doing that right now. It's really too far of a walk for people to get up to the, to the apple orchard, so we run hayrides. We'll probably change that route a little bit. Last year, we ran it all the way down and around, and we'd like to get it so we can shorten it up and shorten the trip, and also have, you know, be a little less, little less impact on some of our neighbors as well. There are apple cannon blasters, kind of envision them going right there. That's a little, that's kind of a, little pun intended, a moving target. We're trying to figure out where they fit. One of the cool advantages for us with that is in, in New York State, when an apple, if you're in the pick-your-own-apple business, you have to, you just have to understand that a third of the apples are going to wind up on the, on the ground. It's just what happens. We're in the family business, and it's not a lot of fun if we're up there saying, don't let your daughter drop that apple, you know, that's just not what we do. But once they hit the ground, I can't sell them for consumption. This gives us a way where we can, okay, yeah, we can actually use something that's, that's essentially garbage and turn it into a fun activity that, like I said, turns some of our garbage into gold.
Could you describe how the cannons work?
Yeah, they're air-powered, so they're just pneumatic cannons. They have a really big air compressor, and they look like, I should have put a picture in here. They look like, everybody will see Star Wars, you know, the cannons that used to be on Star Wars, that's what they look like.
This weekend.
Yeah, as I said, yeah, you're going to see it. And, and really, you just, you know, you can hop up there, and even kids can do it, and they just, you know, pull the trigger, and it launches, it launches, it launches an apple. We put some targets out, and people just have fun with it, it's just, you know...
Give prizes when they hit the hardest target.
Yeah.
They get stuffed animals. So did you do it this year?
We did.
Where did you do it this year on the site compared to what you're proposing here?
This year, we, we had them right about here, shooting to the west.
How do people know about it? I mean, this year?
Just word of, word of mouth, Linda, yeah, and really, it's a, it's a visual thing, so you know, if you see it, you hear it, you know, we encourage people to...
You hear people screaming when they hit the tug, and they get excited.
I mean, it's really like the jumping pillow, you know. Who knows what, if I, if I told you 15 years ago, you know, what a jumping pillow is, you all would look at me and say, I don't, I don't get it, but you know, it's the kind of thing where, and it, it just grows, because people see somebody using it and having fun at it, like, well, what's that? I want to go check it out. It's what we do.
The dads like it.
That's for sure. That is for sure. Farm animal area, we have that now. We have goats and ponies and chickens and all that good stuff. We, we were exploring pig races, there's a picture in your, in your hand out of what that might look like. It's just a fun little thing. That would probably only happen as few as two, it's, I don't, I don't imagine it would happen more than every hour, but it's just a fun way where we can bring people in, have a little fun with them, teach them a little bit about agriculture. We always say, if I can remind people, just give them one tiny nugget, that Wegmans actually isn't the beginning of the food chain, then we've scored, right? We scored a win. We laugh about it, but it's true. And I, that's not a, that's not a derogatory comment about Wegmans. I mean, you walk into the Wegmans produce section, or tops, whatever it is, say, wow, this is amazing. But there is something that happens before that, and so we like to take an opportunity to do that. We do that on hayride, too, you know, about half of our hayride, if you take our hayride, you know, we have a little talk track that goes with it, and part of it's talking about And part of it's talking about what we're doing and, you know, what you can do in the apple orchard and the corn maze, but part of it is talking a little bit about production agriculture. Yeah, hey, we actually are doing this. Demonstration area, we have that.
Yep.
There you go. Right there, it's going right at. Kind of loose location on that, but what we're looking to do there is do sort of, again, farm info type things, things that are related. So, you know, it might be, we've had a chainsaw carver guide command before.
We've got children fiddlers.
Children fiddlers. It might be a spinner. We've even looked at, there's like these pneumatic animal shows, you know, kind of an animated show that would be an ag education type thing, so.
Yeah, sheep shearing, that's a good idea. Sheep shearing, something.
Yeah, yeah. Those are the good things that we think would be fun.
Sheep to shawl.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then we can spin it. There you go.
Oh, wow. You're a hunter.
These three guys, do I write new hats?
I like it. That's an event.
Just let us know when you're ready to go. Picture boards and farm trivia, which I forgot to put on here. We've done that for a number of years. It's just, again, the farm trivia just has, you know, little flip ups that you can, you know, ask the question, you flip it up and wow, there's the answer. Flower production field, that's, you know, we had our sunflower field back here this year. Probably will be there again next year, but may move around a little bit. Farm market, we kind of envision that going there. And I put a picture in there, but don't anybody get crazy, don't hold me to that. It's on, yeah, right there, Linda, yeah. That's one that exists in Syracuse. I doubt that ours would be that large, but we kind of like that sort of a layout. The idea would be that, you kind of imagine dividing that building up into thirds. One third of it would be the actual farm market where the store is, the bakery and that sort of thing. The center section, as we envision, would be kind of a pass through, you know, almost an information admission area. And then the other side would be really clear span that would be used.
For flex space.
Yeah, flex space would be used in the summertime for our vegetable pickup, for our CSA. Might have groups in there on a weekend and then we use the storage. We have no, we have some storage, but not enough. So in the off season would be farm storage. Food service buildings, again, you know, couple there, right here on the edge, and bathrooms. So food service, again, you know, same sort of things that we talked about. You know, future additions, oh, yeah. How did I skip that? I missed the fire pit, sorry about that. There's a picture of them in there too. And so the idea with that is that's not just a walk-in, that's not just a walk-in and go, go sit down. Sort of like a campsite location.
Gathering areas.
Gathering area and what we would do is offer them for reservation. So if you had a large, you know, got a bunch of families that are coming and you want to have sort of a home base, you basically get, you know, a little fire pit, a picnic table and some benches so that you can kind of come and go and always have home base. And that would be marketed to, you know, groups if, you know, if Tony decided to invite the town staff and their families over for the afternoon, you could reserve one or two of those. And that's what we're thinking. You know, some, I just jotted down a couple of future possible things, you know, maybe a pavilion for guest seating. It would probably be in the same area and then also use that for off-season storage. And I skipped the whole parking discussion. Of course, we would need some, we're currently parking folks there and I put a couple of pictures of parking in there just because, I don't know, I don't know if people know. Those are all current pictures, so the one with the CSA slash apple orchard parking, well, that one, Linda, that you're looking at is, I'm standing up on Sweets Corners Road. We kind of use an auxiliary lot, so if you look at this map, I'm way up, way up top here. And those are three pictures that we kind of stitched together and that was one of our busy apple days this fall. And then the other one that says CSA parking, that's the overflow parking that we were just talking about. The other one that says CSA apple orchard parking, that shot was taken from up in the orchard. And I forgot to include, and I also took one, but I'm guessing a few of you have been by in the fall on Route 250. And, you know, we fill that lot easily and we're very fortunate that the YMCA moved in next door and we have a reciprocal parking agreement with them because we overflow onto them, which has worked out really well because the only time we need to overflow is on a really nice fall day. And on a really nice fall day, the YMCA is not that busy, so it's worked well to kind of work together on that. What did I forget? Jim and Mark and Zach, you've heard me say this enough times. What did I forget?
Could you explain to the board, we talked about certain parts of the business were not the operational year round.
Yeah, so we're.
Get down as to what will.
Sure. Yeah, well, I can tell you what we envision, certainly right now, and I don't see this changing in the near future, but never is a long time. I always remind myself of that. So right now, we close on October 31st. We're done until, it depends on when Easter is, we run an event right before Easter. What we would envision, at least in the short run on this, we would be open predominantly, this is predominantly a fall venue. So we would open up mid-August because we have apple varieties that are ready in mid-August and then run through October 31st and probably be open virtually every day, maybe not every day until after Labor Day, August, probably just weekends. And what we see right now is the rest of the season, we would predominantly be open for special events or group type activities.
Birthday parties.
Yeah, birthdays. If there was a company that wanted to do a team building, we're still, yeah, and CSA pickup, still working out on that. The reality for us is that the retail business, although it's fun, is not very economically viable. Even on Route 250, it's not very economically viable for us. We spend a lot of time and a lot of money and at the end of it, we look at each other and say, "Really? That's it?" So what we might do as we move over here, we may do something where, and I'm not sure about this, we might do something like hop into the weekend and we would be open on Thursdays from four to nine. Still very much in the planning stages, but I can say with a pretty high degree of certainty, we would not nearly run hours that we are now. Right now, we open up, you know, we run kind of a flex schedule in April and even May, depending on the weather, but once we get to June, we're open every day from 10 until 10 until nine until school starts up again and then 10 until eight. Yeah, we don't see that happening.
How many school groups do you get a season? Seems like the bus is always there and over at the lot.
We can handle six groups at a time. The trick is, most of them want to come in the morning, so if I had known you, if I had anticipated that question, I could have told you. It's a really compact season though. I mean, it's really three weeks. We put through a lot in three weeks, I'll tell you that.
But that will continue, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So our fall schedule would be similar. In fact, the other nice thing about this is, one of the problems we have with school groups is, you know, you come every year. Well, if the first grade came or the kindergarten came, they don't really want to come in first grade. Well, it's the same program. But when we move over here, now we've got apples as another opportunity.
Okay, spring.
Yeah, there's all sorts of things that we can do over there. So you can do, I'm not sure if spring and field trips are really marketable, but you can, it's something we've talked about and explored and even maybe, you know, some sort of a farm camp where we can actually teach kids a little bit about ag. I'm not sure, by the way, I'll say on the record, I'm not sure that's economically viable and I'm getting too old to do things that aren't economically viable, so it's not high on my radar, but.
It's another reason you came tonight, Dale.
Yeah.
Did you miss that?
Can't wait.
Missed that little subtle.
He can't wait to have five-year-olds there wanting to dig in the dirt on the day that it's raining.
So, Phil, you've kind of put into numbers what motivated the parking on the plan for the board? So we see the pictures in the PowerPoint about what's on site across the street.
So here's the thing, what motivated this is my nephew-in-law's an engineer and he said, "You've got to show this much parking here, they're going to kick you out." I think, what was the count on that, 120? I mean, the reality is what we really need to, the only time we need a lot of parking is on nice days. On a nice day, I don't mind using the overflow into a hayfield, but some people come like our CSA pickup is going to happen no matter what. It is going to happen. And there are times, we also, for our CSA members, they can do pick your own on their pickup day and/or Saturdays. And I'll tell you what, if you're in our vegetable share program and you're getting the value out of it, you're coming to pick your own. And so those days, it doesn't really matter what the weather is, they're coming. So we've got 300 members, 300 family members, more than that because some share. And so that's really what our thinking is on the gravel, the gravel lot to be able to accommodate those people. Again, there is a segment of the population that is coming regardless of the weather. And then the rest of it, I'm very happy with overflow on a hayfield because if it's a nasty day, they're not coming anyway, so it's not a problem for us. Does that answer?
Yes.
Now, you had, obviously you had events this fall. How did you, you don't have a dedicated parking lot, how did you handle getting people in and to the right spot and not parking up and down?
So we do have sort of a dedicated parking area here, Mark. It's mostly grass, it's all grass. There's just a.
Fortunately, it was a dry fall.
Yeah. But I think over the years, every time there was a, they were paving and there was a little bit left in the paver, they would ask the wellnesses if they wanted it. And so there's a little pad there, you know, you can, it kind of designates the entrance. And so we set up and there were actually, there were four rows of parking right there off of Sweets Corners Road. And then the balance of it, we had on the upper end of this field is overflow and folks just walk down.
And to answer your question, manpower, people pointing, people where.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have people.
We run the radios.
That's what helps to keep it from.
To go crazy.
Seven person parks along the road edge, then the next person.
Right. So what we did, what we did with that is we actually took bushel crates.
Wickham Farms crates, yeah.
Yeah, and just stapled on laminated sheets that said, "No parking." And so we would put them out on the weekend. And then we had someone in the lot floating around with a walkie and someone out by the front. And so when the lot was full, we would have somebody in a shirt, just like you, Zach, out there in an orange shirt and basically, you know, with a flag and a clipboard saying, "Parking full," and pointing them on up. And then there would be someone up there to receive them and say, "Okay, pull in here and park." Because the last thing that we wanted, and what happens is, once one person, we'll have this happen on Route 250 every now and then. Every now and then, somebody will do it on Route 250, even though there's an abundance of parking, but once one person does it.
You're toast.
Oh, my gosh.
Then the lot's got to be full, so I might as well pull up here.
And so then they're backed up all the way in front of Grossman's Nurse. We haven't had that problem lately because we've gotten pretty good at processing people and we didn't have that problem at all on Sweets Corners this year. And fortunately, we had that problem once last year on a CSA U-Pick day and we realized immediately, okay, we can't do that again, so we just expanded our grass parking area. We already had it there, we just never envisioned using it for, and we just flagged it and staked it with, you know, temporary rope so that we had it for overflow if we needed it.
So the map that I have, I think it shows 179 spaces.
Can you tell us, is it 25 or 75?
75.
175.
I think it's 170, okay, 175, no, 170, my apologies, 175.
Those are old eyes.
Old eyes, I know.
My old eyes.
Thank you for that comment, Mr. Costello.
At least you're willing to walk. Bill, can you give us a little idea of what you've done for like community outreach with neighbors?
Sure.
Things like that?
I've talked to this gentleman here, the guy who owns this house, this house.
You're on Sweets Corners?
Yep, on Sweets Corners. So I've talked to here and here, which are surrounded by property that we own. I own this house, so I've talked to the tenants and they're all happy with it. I've talked to here, which would be the Kelman's, here, Amy Reneer, here, I've talked to Perrin Pia. And had, I don't know how many of them made contact with you all, but.
I was just going to highlight that, Bill. I did receive, excuse me, three emails, one from Richard Kinnis, 1321 Sweets Corners Road. And he was going to come here tonight even though he just had his knee replaced.
He's had his knee replaced.
And I told him, "Thank you for the support. Please tune into Channel 12, stay home and continue to rehab the knee." I've got a second one that came in from Pia Stompy.
Which is the right.
And she's at 1618 Field, again, certainly very supportive. Her biggest concern that she raised is the noise level or potential noise level as it related to the apple guns and in proximity to their property. And then also talked about Mr. Wickham proposed planting a row of trees behind a stone fence as an additional barrier to that property. And then the last, the last one came from Jason Bush and he has two properties, as you indicated, 1320 and 1380. He owns both of those properties and is very supportive of those activities that you're proposing. So those are the three that I received.
And as a follow-up, so I've talked to these folks and they all expressed support, no real concerns. I'm actually meeting with them. And I've offered to do buffer before, by the way, but.
They like the view.
But, yeah, they do like the view, so there's kind of the trade-off. Actually going to meet with whoever of these group wants to this Saturday at four, unless it's ridiculous weather. And we're just going to walk and kind of, we're trying to make sure we're all on the same page. I don't want to put trees up and then find out that somebody did not want trees, so I'm open to that. We also talked about some strategy, so the cannons, I've got to figure that out and I've got some ideas in my mind. We've talked to them about it. You know, here's the bottom line for us, you know, we learned a long time ago, the easiest way to have good neighbor relations is to actually have neighbor relations, so we're kind of on the, you know, I encourage communication, you know, if there's a problem, you know, it's, I always say, it's a lot easier to pull a sliver out before it gets really festered and sore. So, you know, we try and talk and if we got something going on, you know, if I can fix it, we're going to fix it. You know, so buffer, I don't think, I don't think anybody here has a really big concern about that. You know, one of the things that we will do.
Could be wait and see, too.
That's the thing, yeah. So again, we don't want to, we don't want to get crazy, happy to do it if everybody wants it. I offered to put fence up this year, nobody really wants fence. One of the things we've talked about doing is, I actually had somebody who was having a picnic in Amy Reneer's backyard. Who thinks that that's okay? I'm not sure, but anyway.
Be surprised.
Yeah, I guess. I'm never surprised, I guess. But what we'll do at a minimum is in the back of the corn maze, we'll probably roll out like temporary black snow fence.
So they'll see corn, but they won't see the fence, but the fence will stop anyway.
So what do they see now that they like?
Well, it's just farm.
Well, they like seeing a farm.
They have a sunflower, there's.
They'll be gone?
Great, but, no. No, well, it's just a moving thing, so, you know, even for crop rotation, they'll move around.
They like seeing what we're growing.
You know, I think a lot of it, Linda, is, you know, we don't have to look into someone else's back deck, you know? So whatever's going on, and the thing about what we're doing is it's always changing, you know? So with the vegetable program, you know, if I grew peppers there this year, there's not going to be peppers there next year, just as it works that way.
But along this line where the residents live, you have a buffer, 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 and then there's no buffer when it gets to the corn maze.
Yeah.
And you still do the corn maze if you had some sort of.
Yeah, yeah. And actually, corn maze is.
It could be, yeah. It would be considered.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, I think, I like everything that you said and the fact that, you know, you want to keep the good relationships going and stuff like that. And they're probably all customers of yours and will continue to be customers of yours, so I just encourage you to keep that type of open communication with them, so there's no surprises or there's no, I thought we were going to do this when you did that, as you stated before.
Which may happen somewhere down the line, but that's all I need is somebody just call me and say, "Hey, I thought you were going to do this and you did that. Let's get together and talk."
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I guess I have a question more for town staff. Just remind me again and those watching at home, why this is before the town board and sort of what our purview is for this property and what action items may come down the road for this property?
Obviously, the conservation easement falls under the town board's purview. They're looking for this board to make a determination that what they're showing as agricultural meets the intent of what the easement was originally. The easement was between the Wellness family and the town board. The easement was between the Willmans family and the town board. Many members are new, but the previous town board put this in play. So they're looking to make sure that it meets the intent of the original easement. They would still need to come back before the planning board for layout and final design of where things go and parking lots and everything else. But the town board's action in this is the easement area only. Mixed use falls wholly under the planning board as well as site plan, layout of buildings and future parking lots and access, and everything else will fall under the planning board's process.
So part of that is, we've been pushing because although I think staff is all on board and their interpretation is in line with what ours is, my concern always is staff turns over as well as town board, and so, you know...
You know something about my job that I...
Yes, I do.
Well, you have the orange shirt on.
I do. Because forever is a long, forever is a long time, Zach, and we're talking about, again, Deb and I are getting to the age where, you know, whatever, in 10 years or so, it won't matter that much to us, but...
Speak for yourself.
He's gotta beat somewhere, right?
As the next generation gets involved, as the next generation gets involved, it's important to make sure that everybody understands, this is what we're doing and this is what, this is legit. It is, it does, it does fall within the confines of the easement so that we don't get somebody who's 40 years old and invested, you know, 20 years of their life and realize, holy cow, we just got the rug pulled out from under them. So, again, not unlike my strategy or our strategy with the neighbors, we prefer to have open conversation before things fester and it gets ugly.
And so there's really two items for this board. One, certainly, the establishment of the farmstead. So that's the call for this board. And then, secondly, is the conservation easement and what's being proposed in the conservation easement, all aspects of it, that we believe fit within that conservation easement as was prepared. So those are our two primaries that we certainly wanna be taking a look at. And so any questions that we have, make sure that we're comfortable with, you know, where they are with things. So one of the questions that I have, Bill, is, and family, is with regards to the parking. And so you talked a little bit about, I think your nephew-in-law said, "You gotta have the parking and what have you." Certainly have all of the parking within the farmstead area. Did you take a look at any other alternatives for parking? So let me maybe back up and ask the question kind of in two parts. This part, although it is more of what I'll call gravel not paved, that is what I would call a permanent type of parking location. And then you have other areas that you did use for overflow and things like that. As you took a look, excuse me, as you took a look at the parking in the farmstead area, recognizing that not only did it serve aspects of the farmstead, you know, your barn and CSA and things like that, did you have any discussions around either splitting the parking between the other activities and mixed use versus just putting it all in the farmstead easement area?
Yeah, had discussions, Tony.
Yep.
The problem is, it's a fairly wet area here. The other problem is, there's not a ton of, there's not a ton of available space there, and we definitely can't accommodate everyone there. And now we get into splitting far, and it gets very confusing for people when they come. I don't understand, where do I park? And so here, you're virtually, okay, I missed here, most of the people are gonna come this way, this is full, I'll just continue on, I can see it anyway. So I think, I think just from a sort of a common sense and customer-friendly traffic flow, that's what works. And the vast majority of people who are coming throughout the season are coming for the farm-related activities. So I think the gravel lot makes sense there, just to accommodate CSA pickup, you know, our apple farm. CSA, if you come on a CSA, if any of you have ever passed by here on CSA UPEC day, it's rocking and rolling. And so to have them park down there, they're gonna be mad because they've gotta lug all of their stuff, you know, past our farm shop where we have equipment. And so I think this, I think this makes sense in terms of making, you know, logical, there's a logical connection to our overflow lot. It gives us the opportunity to get people close to where they need to be for CSA vegetable pickup and field trips, apples that are coming for, field trips that are coming for apples or pumpkins, you know, with buses. It's what we have to do to have, to be able to, I had one tour bus that came this fall down to the apple orchard, and I'll tell you what, glad it was a dry fall, but we still learned how to push a bus out.
A girls' cross team pushing a bus out of the lot.
Not a lot of tow hooks on a tour coach.
They were, they had an empty bus.
In the end, we actually, you know, I said to the driver, "Hey, how many girls are on there?" "Huh?" "25?" I said, "Get 'em off." And he watches push for a little bit, and then they say, "Hey, do you want us to help?" "Oh, yeah, they definitely do." And push them on out. But I think the reality is that the gravel parking that we're proposing is what we need to service the farm, the farm activities.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, board, other questions, comments, anything that they may have missed or you'd like a little bit more explanation on?
A lot to digest.
So, okay. Staff, I'd ask staff, any, anything that, so the staff has been having conversations since probably September or thereabouts. Is there anything that hasn't been covered tonight by Bill and his team that we should put on the table for discussion?
Well, it's in the jumps, I mean, you think about going out to Kelly's Farm out in Hilton. They've got the bakery and all that stuff. Is that your intent, to have that kind of a thing operating here as well?
Yeah, which is basically what we do right now, Jim. On 250, we have, you know, we make our own donuts, we make cookies, you know, lunch.
That's part of the marketing, that third, of the marketplace.
Exactly. You've never had our donuts?
Oh, my.
I'm embarrassed to say I haven't, but I will.
Next one. He's got a granddaughter, he's growing up fast.
There you go.
She's already been there.
Okay. Anything else, staff? Mark, Zach, anything that, again, you guys have volleyed this mostly with, you know, Bill and Debbie and their team. Anything else that we should put on the table for town board's thoughts, consideration?
Will there be any storage of farm equipment in the parking lot at any time, or is that just kind of...
It's not our intent, for sure. Certainly not.
And I'm not suggesting that you couldn't or shouldn't. I'm just wondering if you're going to, because you're building a parking lot that you're not gonna use a lot of the time, and I'm just wondering...
Just wanna follow up to that. Where is the storage for the equipment?
I don't have it on the map.
Laser pointer...
Well, it's not there. The map doesn't go that far. Honestly, the, most of our equipment storage right now is sort of hidden down around the corner. We have traditionally parked it right here by the shop. There is a little bit of a pad. We've started to move away from that in part because we're doing more things there. But also in part, as I've met with some of the neighbors, and although they don't complain about it, I look up their back windows and say, "Oh, my God."
His wife doesn't like it.
It'd be one thing if we had all brand-new shiny equipment, but we're actually trying to make a living at this, so it's not all. So most of it right now is parked, if you continue down. When we're using it in the season, it's oftentimes here by the shop, at least the stuff that we use every day. But the stuff sort of off-season and when we're not using it, either around the corner or way over back by a hedgerow, just to try and, you know, not have the eyesore. So to say never, I would, I'd never say never because, you know...
It's low on the priority list?
Well, you know, it's not our intention, but there are times when just, you know, practical reality is, when we're done with hayrides on a weekend, you know, the hayride wagons and the tractors get left there.
General farmer activities, I mean, you're moving stuff around.
And that's why I'm trying to rationalize in my mind the fact we do have a large parking lot. The theoretically, I guess you could build a large parking lot to accommodate farm equipment if you ever needed to do that or somebody wanted to do it.
Yeah, I could. What I'd rather do is someday come back and extend the farmstead somewhere to actually put up a decent storage building.
A barn.
But that's only money. Not today.
Board, other questions, comments for Bill or Debbie and Dale? Okay. All right, so our charge certainly is to absorb all of the items that we heard tonight and the new material that Bill did provide, so thank you for that. And so let me give a rundown, because I always like to kind of let people know where they are and where they're going, so to speak. So this is our last work session of 2017, which is just surprising for me to hear myself say that. Our next work session is on January 10th. And so one of the things that we'll be doing between now and then, reviewing this material if there is any questions or anything like that that we need by way of either additional information or what have you. Probably Zach and Mark will be the two primaries that would reach out for that. Bill, so if there's any questions, or what about this, or we missed that, or what's your thoughts on that, we'd make sure that we get that back. And then the intent of the board would be to come back here on the 10th and to bring that up for some further discussion and bring us to a point and work towards, again, the farmstead designation and location, and then, you know, discussion about the conservation easement, everything that has been discussed, does that fit within that? And again, the idea there is, would be to provide written information back to you so you have that for that, for the file. So, you know, the board would designate that, and then that would then pave the way to move to the next step, which is to take it and move to the planning board. So that would be the, that would be the plan right now, and I just wanted to make sure that you kind of heard what those dates are.
I'm happy to report that I won't be here on the 10th.
The three of us.
We're gonna, we're gonna...
We're on a cruise.
We're gonna be on a cruise. The good news is that we can just change the faces here and you'll see the next generation.
There you go.
Yeah. Kevin pulled the short straw on us.
You know what, sometimes he's gotta take one for the team. So, all right. So one last opportunity before we break, and then I'll also ask the Wickhams, anything additional that you would like to add to the record that we have not already talked about this evening?
Only that if there are questions from any of you, very open to, you know, call, email.
Excellent.
Smoke signals, we're good.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for your time. Have a great holiday, Merry Christmas, enjoy the cruise, and we'll look forward to see some new faces on that end of the table here come January 10th.
Sounds good.
The better ones.
Good, very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we will move on to our third guest. This is the Citizens Climate Lobby, Alan Hibner and Rob Levine. They had an opportunity to come in and speak with EAC, with the Environmental, Energy and Environmental Advisory Committee. And they requested an opportunity to spend 10 or 15 minutes with us to kind of give us an overview of what they're working on, what they've been involved with. And with that, it looks like Alan is getting things teed up. And I also see in the audience that we have Mr. Kanauer, who's part of the EAC and is someone who's been very active with a lot of things that we've done, the town has done. So from a solar standpoint and from some of our recycling and our new charging stations that we've got in and things like that. So with that, Alan, the floor is yours. And Rob, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Okay, I'll get the computer fired up here. It should be coming up any moment. It's great when the technology works.
And as everything is coming up, and welcome to Al on the computer. Al, you did submit a number of items to me after the last EAC. I forwarded that on to the board for their information as at least a courtesy opportunity to review some of that prior to this evening. And I apologize, Mr. Valentine also sits on our EAC, sitting here looking at him.
I should have done that.
He had the opportunity to have...
At least once or twice.
...information on this, so...
While the computer is firing up, let me go ahead and, if I may, get started with our introductions. Okay. There we go. My name is Al Hibner, and I'm currently retired, and I've lived in Penfield my entire, most of my entire life. I currently live on Hail Edge Drive, grew up on Hillcrest Drive. I'm a 1968 graduate of Penfield, and that 50th is just around the corner.
This?
I don't know, time flies. Also, very, very proud that I have eight ancestors on the federal census of 1810, living in the town of Boyle, which became the town of Penfield. So my Penfield roots run pretty deep. I'm a co-lead of congressional lobbying for a group called Citizens Climate Lobby, the Rochester chapter of that group. And I post-retirement, I've been doing volunteer work now for about a year with Citizens Climate Lobby. And if I look back, I never thought that I would start a new career after retirement as a volunteer citizen lobbyist. But, you know, the pay's not very good, like, zero. And the benefits, however, are great. The benefits of doing what I'm doing, I think, are great. Those are working hard to create a more livable world for my grandchildren and for future generations. Priceless, that's priceless. So thank you all for the opportunity to tell you more about the important work of this organization and to ask for your support. Rob Levine will be telling you more about what we'll be asking you to do for us. And I would also like to thank you especially Supervisor Plafon for inviting us to speak tonight. We had the honor of making a presentation to the Energy and Environmental Advisory Committee back in September. So I'm here tonight with my colleague, Rob Levine, I gotta say it properly. And I'd like you to go ahead and introduce yourself on this PowerPoint. It's running up.
I guess I'll say, you know, growing up in Rochester, lived here most of my life. I got involved in climate activism two years ago after complaining a lot to my family, and my adult children said it was time to stop complaining and do something. So I wanted to get involved in an organization that was solution-oriented and that was particularly bipartisan or nonpartisan in order to make any meaningful change with this particular topic, which is a global issue. We have to put politics aside because hurricanes don't care what side of the aisle your family votes for. Flooding doesn't matter, the windstorms don't matter. So Citizens Climate Lobby is a great organization. I'm gonna steal a little thunder. I found out today from Al that we've grown to over 90,000 volunteers nationally. So I think we qualify as a small army right now, and I think the results that we've seen in the last couple of years are pretty optimistic. Some of us have a pretty bleak picture of where this country is going at the federal level, which is why we're here to speak to you at a more local level. So I'll pass that back to you, Al.
I'm going to spend a couple of minutes telling you who we are, what we do, and how we do it. And have we had any impact on the national discourse about climate change? I think we have. Rob will pick up at the end of that background. I think it's important for you to know what we're doing. And he'll tell you why we're here tonight and what we would like to ask you to do for our organization. I want to take a moment to thank you, especially thank you as current board members, and I want to give credit to all past board members as well for decades, decades of commitment to maintaining a tradition of sustainability in so many ways that you've done this over the years. Even as we speak today, I know that the issue of Shadow Pines is in front of you. I watched the December 6th meeting, about all three hours of it, I watched it, three hours plus. At our core, CCL deeply shares your commitment to sustainable environment, to preserving and protecting for future generations and to creating more livable world. So thanks again to all of you for the hard, hard, hard work that you do. Thank you. So who are we? Very quickly, we're international. We have 457-plus chapters around the world, not just in the US and Canada, but all over the world. We're nonpartisan, absolutely nonpartisan. We build relationships with everybody, even those who oppose us. We're attempting to rise above divisive and hyper-partisan dialogue. That is part of today's discourse. I think we can all agree on that. We're nonprofit, and I think, very importantly, we pride ourselves in being for something, not just against everything, but for something, and that is our policy proposal, a livable world and putting a price on carbon through a carbon fee and dividend proposal that we'll talk about shortly. Our volunteers are working every day to lobby members of Congress on the local, state, and national level. If, we have found out that if we remain laser-focused on one goal and on making a steady transition to a clean energy economy, then we're gonna find ourselves working with everybody. This is not red, this is not blue, it's not conservative. This is not red, this is not blue, it's not conservative, it's not liberal, it's purple. It's a blend. Everybody is involved with making a more livable world. And I think we have a single rule that guides everything that we do. We are modeling that here tonight for you. This is a lobby meeting, and this is how we conduct lobby meetings. And that is that we treat everybody with respect, appreciation, and gratitude, even those people that oppose us. And we are patient, persistent, and hopeful. For an issue like climate change, you've got to be. I think we can boil down what we believe or what we know into 11 words. You know, that's, that's a good thing to do. Number one, climate change is real. Scientists agree. It's us. And there's hope. Too often, the, the issue of climate change is just throw up your hands, I can't do anything about it. Disagree. I want to show you what we're doing. So, what's our solution? If we take just a couple of moments to talk about the solution that we have come up with, it's called carbon fee and dividend. And it, we believe that this solution makes fossil fuels accountable for their costs in the clearest, fairest, and most transparent way. It's what economists and climate scientists agree is the best, arguably the best first step at attacking this problem. So, our solution has three parts, just three, a three-legged stool. Number one, a fee is placed on fossil fuels and other greenhouse gases, not just combustion products of coal, oil, and gas, but also methane, methane being released from fracking and production and so forth, as well as nitrous oxides, hydrofluorocarbons, et cetera. So, all greenhouse gases are going to have a fee assessed to them in a CO2 equivalent amount per ton, starting low at $15, incrementing $10 per year for a period of years. Okay? A steady rise in the cost of, of carbon emissions, carbon equivalent emissions. All of that money, every single penny of that money is returned to households equally. This is a revenue-neutral proposal. Okay? The money is collected, held in a trust fund, returned to the American households monthly in a check on an equal basis. So, under this plan, a family of four, you'll see what kind of amounts we're looking at, but about two-thirds of all the households in our country would actually break even or receive more in a dividend check than they would pay in higher prices due to the fees. Okay? Thereby protecting the poor and middle class from the rising energy prices that will result from fees on fossil fuels. Third, third step is leakage. I'm talking about business leakage, which is a border adjustment on goods imported from or exported to countries without an equivalent price on carbon. And this is absolutely critical because without it, without an adjustment, we're not gonna be able to discourage businesses from relocating to where they can emit more, more greenhouse gases and encourage, this will also encourage other nations to adopt equivalent price on carbon. Okay? If they're being charged as their goods come in, they may want to collect that themselves and use that money. So, all told, this three-legged approach rewards producers, consumers, and other nations if they emit fewer greenhouse gases. That's the proposal. Okay? So, if that's the core proposal, what will it do? And we've gotta find a way to find out how it will do. So, we did that. Okay? In order to test the, the economic effects of a carbon price, carbon fee and dividend proposal, we went out in 2014. We requested that Regional Economic Models, this is a company that you may even know, I don't know, it's called REMI. It's a very well-respected provider of world-leading regional policy analysis models. We had them conduct a national and regional study of what the macroeconomic effects of implementing our policy would be. Okay? In short, we asked that they score our policy. You may have heard that term used many times in the last six months, where Congress has a major legislation, piece of legislation scored by CBO, Congressional Budget Office, or Joint Tax Committee. So, the report came back projecting the impacts of a rising fee and dividend versus no fee and dividend on four major areas seen here: emissions, jobs, and GDP growth, health, and incomes. Report concluded that there is no economic argument against carbon fee and dividend. It reduces emissions quickly, it grows GDP, increases jobs, and saves lives. Before this meeting, as Supervisor LaFountain alluded to, I forwarded documents to you that will allow you to drill down more deeply into the national and regional study results from REMI. So, we invite you to take a deeper dive into those results, and the regional study is New York, Pennsylvania, and New Jersey, what would happen in those four areas if we did this policy. And we would welcome your questions on these at any time. So, let's take a, a quick look. Within 10 years, if we implemented carbon fee and dividend as proposed, we would have a 31% reduction within 10 years of greenhouse gases, CO2 equivalent emissions. Within 20 years, we're looking at a 50%, and this is compared to a baseline of 1990 levels. Okay? That is dramatic reductions in CO2 equivalent emissions. Jobs, the dividend is a stimulus. When you put money into people's pockets monthly, they spend it. So, it acts as a stimulus, it goes back in the economy, creates jobs in many, many different employment sectors, and we're looking at over 10 years creating 2.1 million jobs, and within that 20-year period, looking at close to 3 million jobs. That's greater than a 1% increase in, in employment over what we would get without implementing carbon fee and dividend. We're putting the money back into the markets for people to spend it as they see fit. And we are triggering a market signal, we're sending market signals to all types of businesses to increase the efficiency of the products that they make. And so, the fee would collect on average between $70 to $85 billion per year. Okay? That's a huge amount of money, when you think about it. And that money's gonna be pumped back into the economy over 20 years, and we're looking at a close to $1.4 trillion greater boost in economic output that we would, than we would have if we did not have carbon fee and dividend. So, that's a large, a large amount of money going back into the economy. If you think about lives saved, we know that when you burn fossil fuels, you also release other toxic substances that contribute to air pollution, which shortens people's lives. I don't know if you saw 60 Minutes, there was a correspondent who went to Beijing and toured some stores and facilities with somebody there, and they walked into a store that had respirators, and they had designer respirators for infants. You could choose your, your cartoon characters for your six-month-old respirators. Okay? So, that's what I'm talking about. Reducing emissions, absolutely defying particular emissions that really work on people's lungs. We're saving lives by preventing premature deaths associated with respiratory disease and asthma. We're looking at 13,000 premature deaths being prevented per year after 10 years and 227,000 over 20 years. This part is the actual dividend. Since the carbon fee is, is, the fee is rising steadily each year, of course, the emissions are going to be declining, the, the number of tons, but the fee is going up at a rapid rate, fairly rapid, controlled, consistent rate. So, the amount of dividend is actually increasing year over year. At 10 years, we're looking at about $300 a month, and when we get to 20 years, we're looking at about $400 a month per family of four in their dividend. So, the products made with relatively clean energy are gonna be less expensive, and customers will have, consumers will have more money spent. So, in keeping with telling you this story, how does CCL build political will? What do we do? We're out there developing new chapters. We're up to 457 chapters across the world all the time. We hold lobby meetings. I'm the liaison with Senator Schumer's local district office. So, I've had several meetings this year and another one planned in January. We meet with the staff to lobby and educate them as we're doing to you so that they will then affect their boss, Charles Schumer, to look at our policy proposal. We write letters to the editor op-eds, we publish in all kinds of outlets, we table, we collect postcards and, and letters, and we take them with us to our lobby meetings. And finally here, we reach out and connect with all types of groups, including a group like yours. I'm, I'm right now doing an outreach to students. I'm engaging high school students. I was a former teacher at one point. But I'm engaging high school students, and then we're training them on how to lobby and actually putting them into our lobby meetings where they have a role to play in the lobby meetings. Kind of a cool civic lesson, I think. It really, quite experience. I may be kinda contacting Penfield High School here soon to see if they want a club to talk, to talk to. But if you look at the graphic, over seven years, we've grown substantially in all of these areas, and as I mentioned, we have now 457 chapters with over 90,000 total members just as of today. Okay. So, finally, before I turn over to Rob, I want to take you through a couple of slides that show you, have they done anything? Are there any results? Okay? I want to tell you a story. Have we made any progress? I think the answer to that is yes. Back in 2014, a volunteer named Jay Butera, he's a CCL volunteer, he teamed up with Ted Deutsch from Florida. Okay? They were kicking around Congress, the halls of Congress in Washington, talking, brainstorming, coming up on an idea to create an idea for a bipartisan caucus. And their dream was to have one Republican member join, but recruit a Democratic member, meaning that it was a bipartisan caucus. Sort of in the Noah's Ark metaphor, where we would have two by two, two Democrat, Republican, and vice versa, they would recruit one. It took the better part of two years for them to obtain the permission from, or to obtain membership from the first Republican, Carlos Curvillo, in Florida, whose district happens to be the southern part of Miami-Dade County, the Everglades, and Florida Keys. So, he has a real constituency liability here, or constituency responsibility to look at climate change, even as a Republican congressman. In less than two years, we've grown to 31 Democrats and 31 Republicans. Who would have thought? 62 members in the House Climate Solutions Caucus, committed to educating its members on what actions they can take on climate change. So, what are they doing? In September, I'm sorry, in July, 20-plus members, Republican and 20 Democratic members of this caucus, combined to defeat a Freedom Caucus amendment. You've heard of the Freedom Caucus, I think. The amendment the Freedom Caucus put forth to the Defense Authorization Act was to strip out funding for all branches of the military to study the effects of climate change on their top 10 bases. So, the House Climate Solutions Caucus defeated that amendment. Yesterday, the 2018 Defense Authorization Act was passed and signed by the President, and the funding for studying climate change effects on military basis was maintained. Second thing, this just happened last week. Eight Republican House members of the Climate Solutions Caucus requested that leadership, this is Paul Ryan and Mr. Brady, who are shepherding the tax bill, that they remove the provision for the Alaska National Wildlife Refuge drilling. They asked that it be removed. These are eight Republican members asking for its removal. In March of this year, Elise Stefanik, who's our representative, Congressional Representative in District 21, the North Country, Messina, the Adirondex, Watertown, she sponsored a resolution, the Republican Climate Resolution, and the effect of that, again, is to support taking action to study climate change. Lastly, every year in June, hundreds of our volunteers descend on Washington and attend lobby meetings with hundreds, hundreds of congressional offices. Now, it's important, what we're measuring here, and I'll take you through very quickly, is a sea change, a paradigm shift of a great change in attitude and interest amongst Republican House members, actually Republican congressional members, in discussing climate change on the part of all of these members. So, we descended on Washington, had 501 meetings, 264 of them were with Republicans. We looked at, we ranked the involvement and level of interaction of each meeting. 185 of those meetings with Republicans showed clear and genuine interest. Now, you may think I'm picking on Republicans only, why not Democrats? The assumption is that Democrats are more open to discussions of climate change. So, we're looking at both sides of the aisle here. 185 showed clear and genuine interest. 57 meetings showed were quiet but not uninterested, and only nine of 264 meetings did the Republican member of Congress, were they combative or totally uninterested in the interaction? Some were not able to be determined. I think the most important statistic here is the ratio of Tier 1 to Tier 3. So, we're looking at 21 meetings with Republican members of Congress who were engaged and showed clear and genuine interest in this topic versus one meeting where they were not. And if you look at the progress year over year here for the last four years, we've seen a doubling of that ratio and a very strong decline in the number of combative meetings. So, what's happening is a change in attitude and interest amongst all members of Congress, actually, but in particular, we're measuring the Republican members of Congress to study, looking, talking about, and dealing with climate change. Republicans were most interested in, the topic they brought up the most was the Climate Solutions Caucus. They are looking at their peers to see who's joining, to see if it's safe to go in the water and to join the discussion on climate change. And increasingly, with 62 members in our caucus, the answer to that is yes. I think you can see that with our patient, persistent, and respectful approach, lobbying for a more livable world, we are obtaining results. So, before I turn over to Rob on, on the next part, I want to just stop and ask if you, it's a lot to absorb, if you had any questions before we move on.
I, I do have a question.
Sure.
So, can you discuss the $15 fee?
Yes.
Who pays the fee?
It's going to be paid by the people that are, except for well, or the source of, it's gonna be paid by the people that are producing the, producing and burning the, the actual fossil fuels.
Oh, so.
Or producing the actual emissions.
So, the companies or the distributors?
Yes, the Exxon Mobil's of the world.
Okay. So, then assumption is they would pass that on to consumers?
Absolutely. Which is why we are funding with a dividend. We're, we're paying back that money to the American people.
Right. And that, so that leads me to, to my next question, which is, who imposes the fee? Is that a congressional action?
This is, this is, this is gonna be proposed legislation. I mean, we're looking, potentially, I think, Rob, we're looking at that in House Caucus, ultimately to bring this forth as a bill, as proposed legislation.
So, then not only would they impose the fee, but they would, Congress would collect the fee?
Yeah, absolutely.
And they would have regulation over the fee, is that correct?
As far as contribution-
Right. As well as distribution-
As the dividends, as they see fit. However, the way that it will be constituted is to return every penny minus administrative costs. This is not to divert money to, to favored industries or to credits or anything of that nature. This is, this is designed to be kept revenue-neutral. We are gonna put every penny back into the people of the, of the American people's pocket. We're not looking at moving that money around for purposes other than the dividend out to the American people.
And within the proposed legislation, I assume there's a provision whereby there is no future triple-down to local governments as far as administrative needs?
No, I'm not. Under current, under current projections, no.
There's, there's something in there that says this is strictly, there's strictly-
Legislation has been proposed from a number of different sources, so I couldn't tell you what really is gonna happen. I think the, the, the important thing to know is, and our proposal is completely- I think the, the important thing to know is, and our proposal is completely revenue neutral. So, the money goes into a trust, it's not really going to the government, it's being distributed by the government through the Department of Treasury, either in the form of a check, or a direct deposit like Social Security.
Well, the government, there's always costs.
Well, there's administrative costs, correct. But that, that's our proposal, and that's why we, we feel we have much more success with Republicans, because as you know, Republicans don't want to impose a tax and create more government. We don't want government to decide what to do with that money, because I think most of us don't really trust that it'll be done in an efficient way, or in a open way. It's very opaque. So if you look at a cap and trade system, which is different from this, it's very gameable. We don't really know how that money gets chosen to go to this particular company to do research, or to put this particular, you know, thing together. So, our, our plan is really, really simple in that respect. Now, in January of this year, a conservative think tank called the Climate Leadership Council, head by Secretaries Paulson, Baker, and Schultz, who are all Republican members of the Cabinet, under Reagan.
Elder statesmen of the Republican.
Well, I don't care which part of the air.
Right, right. Well, so their proposal is a little bit more conservative, but it's still called a conservative case for carbon dividend. Their proposal returns the dividend to households on a quarterly basis versus a monthly basis. They have a couple of other provisions that are a little bit different. But now you have really two bookends. And so, through the caucus, and what Citizens Climate Lobby is trying to do is build that caucus, so they can determine where in the middle this process is going to work. It may not be a dividend, we may follow the model in British Columbia, where it's returned to families in a tax credit.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay? And we're probably not going to talk about it. British Columbia is like the shining example. They've had this going for about eight or nine years now, where they've done steadily rising fee, return to households, and they have the fastest growing economy of any province in Canada, and they're the leading renewable energy source in Canada. So Canada passed a bill this past year, or the year before, that any province that doesn't have their own carbon pricing legislation will have to follow the national model. So within two years, all of Canada is supposed to have a carbon fee, province by province. So there's going to be something in between. There may be a portion of the money that goes to tax cuts. Their bill, the conservative bill, is more about reducing regulation. We don't address regulation, because if we feel if we reduce carbon usage, we won't need the regulations anyway. But we don't want to mess with that. We just want the money to go straight to families. It's clean, it's clear. And, trust me, once your residents, you know, start getting a check on a monthly basis, they're not going to want to give it up. Because the other examples, Australia initiated a fee about the same time as British Columbia did. But the government took the money, and they started to divvy it up, and of course, prices rose, and citizens were like, okay, everything's going up in price, we're not getting any relief, we have no idea what you're doing with money. So they actually scrapped the bill. So, that's failure, whereas in British Columbia, it's worked beautifully. They have the fastest growing GDP in Canada.
As you can see, what, you know, what I was getting is, we're kind of the gatekeepers of that unfunded mandate stream. And that's what, you know, we're kind of, as it trickles down, we're the, we're the government of last resort, and that's something that, you know, we obviously have a duty to ask questions.
Oh, absolutely.
As to, you know, how is this, how is this handled, you know, how is it supposed to be handled? And is it, is there, is there that, you know, a lock on that gate to prevent local governments from sharing, from having to, you know, to have the burden of administrative burden?
Right.
And administrative costs, for what could be a great idea, but is really burdensome for a local government.
Right, right, right. We hope not. Our proposed legislation will be very similar.
That's kind of like, you know, our duty.
With that, I'll pass the clicker to finish up on why we're here in this, take a couple minutes and jump. All right. So, what I do. Right, okay. Okay. So why are we here speaking to you? I mean, to put it bluntly, we're asking the town of Penfield to issue a resolution supporting carbon fee and dividend. And that's the main issue. So, any federal legislation from our, is going to begin at the grassroots level. Congress responds to the constituents' will, we believe the political will. Politicians don't create political will, they respond to it. So we're trying to create political will with 80,000 volunteers. But in order to really boost that, we need to have it amplified through businesses, through higher education, which we're working with, and through local municipalities. City councils, mayors, your council, chambers of commerce, you all know your community pretty well. And so, if we go out to an event and get 100 letters from people who are in, let's say, at Wickham Farms, and they're picking apples, and we have a table that says, you know, "Support climate change and carbon fee and dividend," sign a postcard, so when we go to Louise Slaughter's office, we can drop off 200 postcards, that's great. But if we get a resolution from the town of Penfield, it's a resolution on steroids, representing 36,000 people. And so, where we've been successful, how that Climate Solutions Caucus was formed, was that CCL chapters in South Florida encouraged municipalities, chambers of commerce, businesses, to endorse the policy and encourage Carlos Curbelo and Ted Deutsch to form that caucus. We're here because Louise Slaughter has not joined the caucus. If she were on the caucus, we really wouldn't need to be here for this. And that's why, as Al said, most people think Democrats are just ready to jump on board.
Automatic, but they're not.
And that's not the case. And part of the reason is, because our proposal is market-based and revenue-neutral, which is designed specifically to appeal to conservatives, because if we don't have conservatives on board, no legislation will pass. There's no perfect legislation.
It's kind of a foreign concept to allow government.
Absolutely. Right. And it's a change, I think, that would be great. So, in order to encourage Louise to join this caucus, we need more support from her constituents. She needs to know that her voters want, we want a seat at the table. There's now 62 members on that caucus. Remember, the Tea Party was 40 members of Congress. So our initial goal is 40 Republicans and 40 Democrats. We have some power in Congress if we can do that. And from our point of view, Louise Slaughter, who has been an exemplary environmental congressperson, her reluctance to get on this caucus is why we're here today. Because we, we did work with the city of Rochester earlier this year, they passed a proclamation that has been delivered to Louise. And so, our, our plan of attack is, if we can get the town of Penfield, we are, actually sent a draft of a proclamation to the town of Pittsford today. We're talking with Brighton, Arundic quite, Fairport, we will move on. If we can get a resolution on steroids from every town, and show Louise that representatives of 500,000 of her constituents are suggesting she join the caucus and explore the concept of a carbon fee, maybe she'll join the caucus. That's really our plan. So, Al's done a great job starting working with high school students. I've started two groups at the U of R and RIT, I'm talking with SUNY Brockport, St. John Fisher tomorrow, and we're meeting with Ann Press at the beginning of the year. So there's another arm to our organization that just works with, with education, so that, you know, if, if our colleges were to promote carbon fee and dividend, it's the largest employer in our area. Right? So these are all the things we need to lobby our congressmen and senators. We're also talking to the Senate, you know, to the Senate to do the same thing, but we know legislation's got to come out of this caucus. And so, as, as residents of Monroe County, we want Louise to be on that caucus, so that we're her at the table. So, that's really what we're doing. And you know that climate change is a global phenomenon, but none of us care all that much until it impacts us locally. So, whether it's water shortages, we were talking last year that we, gosh, we can't talk about sea level rise in Rochester, it doesn't happen here. But this summer, it happened, right? So that's why the town of Arundic quite is a little more receptive to what's going on, because it's not that the commission has raised and lowered the level of the lake, it's runoff from the massive amounts of rain that we had. That's what's causing, I live near Powder Mill Park, and I've never seen the flooding like I've seen this particular summer. I mean, it's, the roads almost close, you know, several times a year, it never happens. So we know that it's a national issue, but it's local budgets that are stressed, right? That windstorm, I don't know what it cost the town of Penfield, but I know in Pittsburgh it was almost $200,000 to repair the damage by that last windstorm that was so.
By the federal government to get relief.
Right. So, while the federal government is still deciding what to do, it's going to be your burden to deal with the impacts, right? You know, I'm watching this great proposal for Wickham Farms, but I would have loved to ask him, how have you seen the season change? I mean, I know that the planting season is changing, I know crops are changing, I know a friend who owns a winery, they're changing varieties of grapes because the growing season is different. Invasive species, it affects us all. Anybody know anybody who had Lyme disease 15 years ago? Never heard of it, right? Everybody's getting it now, because deers live through the winter, and ticks survive the winter, because it's milder. So more people get that. Infectious diseases are spreading worldwide that never got out of the tropics. Now, you know, zika viruses in Florida, or Texas. These are the things that are going to cost local communities that have to deal with these pressures. And so, it's important for local communities to urge Congress to take action, because it shouldn't be just your responsibility, it should be, it should be a national issue. So, we're asking you to, to support and sign a resolution. Philadelphia is the largest city to publicly come out for a carbon fee and dividend, as I said, Rochester, which that should be 210,000 people, we got that wrong, signed a resolution this year. San Francisco, there's a lot of communities on down to, you know, very small communities in New York State. We put those up because those communities were able to encourage their members of Congress to join the caucus. Right? Chris, Chris Collins joined the caucus, right?
Our newest chapter is 27.
Chapter 27, and in a relatively short period of time, Chris Collins joined the caucus.
In Congress, I'm sure.
Yes.
Are there certain committees in Congress that you kind of look to, to see what members are on those committees?
I sent you, it's in the, it's in the PDFs, you've got a nice colored photograph of all 60 committee members.
Yes.
Exactly.
It was interesting, I was in a lobby meeting with Congresswoman Slaughter last March, and we showed her the picture, which at the time was maybe 25 to 30 members, and she looked at it and was just shocked and dismayed at who was on that. She had no idea.
I would believe that it matters, you know, what committees someone sits on, if you can, you know.
Absolutely. I mean, we're certainly targeting, targeting certain people, but as constituents of New York 20, what are we, 25, 27? 25. You know, our mandate is to, you know, approach Louise Slaughter, so that's what we're trying to do. And so, we've had great success. In fact, California, the entire state legislature this past year, sent a letter to Congress that is more detailed, actually, that has some of the specifics of the legislation that they would like to see. Both Houses sent a letter to Congress asking for a carbon fee and dividend, with some pretty, you know, strict proposals. And it's interesting, because they have cap and trade, which is having some success there, but they still think it would be better to do a fee and dividend, and would like to see it at the national level. So what our job has been is, with the city of Rochester, we worked with them to craft a proclamation that was appropriate for Rochester. It's not the same as what you get in Philadelphia, it's not going to be the same as the one from Fayetteville, Arkansas. As I said, we drafted this week a resolution for the town of Pittsford, which they're going to hopefully vote on in two weeks. And we're in talks, as I said, with several other towns at the moment. And so, really, we're asking you to consider taking this step. It's not a costly step to the town of Penfield, but it sends a signal, both to your residents, that you are looking at climate change as a problem that needs to be solved in a big way. Carbon fee and dividend is a big solution, that's why I'm so encouraged. Changing light bulbs is great, getting electric cars is great, getting a more efficient refrigerator is great, you can use the dividend to do that. But if we really want to attack this on a global scale, we need to stop using carbon-based products. And the only way to do that, I've talked to several economics professors in the area, is to control the amount of carbon that's released by either controlling the quantity that's produced, or the price. And most economists will tell you that the price is the preferred way to go, because when you make something more expensive, people find alternatives. So if we've been subsidizing fossil fuels for over a century, making it affordable, and we reverse that and ask them to pay for their true social cost of carbon emissions, then fossil fuels, solar panels become much more competitive, and people will make their own decisions on how they want to generate power. And we need to do this quickly, we really do. And so, the way to do it, without destroying the economy, that's the, you know, the question we get all the time, is to do a sustainable, steady, predictable rise in the prices that businesses, communities, municipalities, individual households have the opportunity to plan ahead and determine how they're going to use energy in the future. So it seems, it seems hopeless, it seems insurmountable, but we don't feel that way. So we're asking for your support. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for your, thank you for the information as well. Rob, you had indicated that you prepared a resolution or proclamation for the town of Pittsford. Is that at their request that?
Yes, yes, we presented.
Put together?
You know, similar process. We met with, we met with, actually, Bill Smith initially. And, you know, the process takes time, so.
Sure.
We were invited, actually, it was earlier this week, to do a similar presentation to the, to the town board. There were about, it was an open session, so there were about 40 or 50 people there. And when we followed up the next day, he asked us to send him copies of other resolutions, as well as one that might be more suitable.
For, for him.
Yeah. And that's, you know, that's what we, that's what we did for the city of Rochester, that's what we like to do, to help you craft a resolution.
Sure.
That makes sense. We're not asking you to put in lots of chargers or anything, it's a rather simple request, I think, but it sends a big signal to our members of Congress. And that's what Citizens Lobby is about, sending signals, building political will. And so, you know, we're hoping that in the next six months, we have a small avalanche of towns that will support the proposal, that will, you know, pressure Louise Slaughter to really consider joining that caucus, and represent us on that very important, what I hope will be a very important body. They've already flexed their muscle, you know, with the Military Appropriations Bill, and I think there's a lot more to come as they get more educated, and there's that safety in numbers.
Is your resolution a generic one, or do you just kind of throw up the town, like Pittsford?
Um, no, I, no, we've changed some things. I mean, you know, and that's, that's where, you know, I don't know who would be the person that would want to work, you know, that we can talk to, but we can, there's a wide variety. The California resolution is incredibly detailed. I don't think most towns want to do that. But, you know, it answers your questions of, you know, how's it going to be distributed and all those kinds of things. And it'll be negotiated through that caucus, for sure. If they were to pass the Climate Leadership Council's proposal today, I would do, you know, cartwheels and say, yes, let's do it. It's not perfect, but we can't wait for perfect. You know? So, so we, you know, we'd be happy to sit down with you, show you a few different resolutions, and see which provisions make the most sense for you and your residents. And then, you know, we'd encourage you to advertise what you're doing to your residents, and make sure, you know, that it's somewhat of a splash in Louise's office. And that's what we do on a fairly regular basis, is we visit, we visit and chat, and that kind of thing.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thanks very much, we really appreciate the time.
Thank you. Alan, thank you again.
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely.
It was my absolute pleasure.
Great.
We're glad you don't have too far to ride home, but you have a safe drive home.
Oh, it's a difference. One question, so, so now that we've asked you to do something for this, how do you approach the decision on whether to do a proclamation or a resolution?
So certainly, this board, after, you know, hearing this, and certainly a lot of information, and this is the first time that the full board has had an opportunity to hear this, what we'll look to do at one of our future work sessions probably we have for the first of the year, bring that back to the table for broader conversation with the board, and we'll certainly keep you posted as part of that as well.
I think it's important that we also, you know, pick or circle back on our Energy and Environmental Advisory Committee.
Right.
We look to them for their expertise.
You're aware that's where we started?
Yes. But as far as for us to, you know.
Right, get to, sure, sure, okay.
Interface, either via the supervisor who sits on that, or other staff.
Mr. Valentine, Mr. Penauer.
Okay.
Super.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great weekend.
Have a great holiday.
All right, you do the same. All right, we'll continue on with our agenda. We have one action item, it's a release of drainage inspection easement at 1429 Schucraft Road. Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just have a map up on the board over here. This initially started as a single-family house at the corner of Garden Hill Lane and Schucraft Drive. The planning board received an application to split it into three parcels. I kind of lightly dashed into green what that was. As part of that, they're adding two new houses, one house here, one house here. As part of that new development, they needed to create a stormwater management area to control that. Sold off the initial house, the developer sold the rehab, the existing house that was there, sold it off to a new owner. The new owner said, I'd actually like it as the greater parcel, bought up the other two lots, came back to the planning board, consolidated it back into one whole parcel. Now the stormwater management area is no longer needed. There is a filed easement for it, just coming before this board, to abandon that easement and file the proper paperwork to abandon easement, as it kind of has come full. and file the proper paperwork to abandon easement, is, kind of has come full circle and back to what it originally was, is not going to have the stormwater facility on it, and therefore, we don't need an easement over it.
All right. Move. So, so moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Quinn. Any further discussion? Mark, you prepare a resolution for Friday for the December 20th meeting for that for the board?
Yep.
All right. So it's moved in the second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's carried, thank you very much. That's our only action item this evening. We have no informational items, and there being no further business to come before the town board at the December 13, 2017 work session, will stand adjourned at 8:50 p.m.